Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, September 20th, 2021. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Metropolis?
Here.
Mr. Kleinman? Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with our work session. The first item on the agenda is the lot consolidation for Premier Dutton. The applicant can please come up to the podium, your name and address, and an overview of what you're looking for this evening.
Yeah, Frank Black, Premier Development Partners. Are you asking for the address of the property or?
Uh, your address?
Oh, yeah. My address is 15 Clifton Point, Lakewood, Ohio, 44107.
An overview of?
Yeah, so basically, we would like to consolidate the two lots. We have a tenant to take the building. We recently purchased the building within the last six months, and the plan is to consolidate the lot to expand their parking requirement. They're going from, I think there's 40-something spaces. We're gonna add another 44. It'll give us 72 in total.
And pretty straightforward for the consolidation part of this. Lynn, anything else?
No, the whole point of the consolidation is to contend with the required parking lot setback. So with the parking expansion proposed as part of the site plan, the applicant would either need a variance to allow for the parking lot to cross the property boundary, or go this route with the consolidation. So it's pretty straightforward.
Just makes it much cleaner.
Yeah.
Pete, any comments or questions?
No, I do not. Anything that was raised prior to that, received Larry's email, and all those deficiencies were corrected, so I have difficulty with this.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, I have no questions on it. Looks like it's pretty straightforward.
All right. Scott, anything?
After reviewing the documents, nothing, no.
All right, thank you. Might as well hang up there for a moment. The second item on the work session agenda is the site plan parking expansion for 9155 Dutton Drive, which would take place after the consolidation. Again, anything else you really want to add? I mean, you kind of gave an overview of what you're doing already.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It's just the expansion of the parking.
Lynn, was there anything else? I mean, I know that there are a few things that are still under review that will need to be conditions of the approval, which you hopefully are aware from the planning report, landscape plan. There's a couple of trees that need to be updated in the selection. Stormwater management's under review, still by the city engineer, and site lighting plan as well.
And this, I've asked, the site lighting?
It was submitted, it just, we haven't gotten the final review, making sure the photometrics are, but it's all in already. We're just waiting for the final okay-dokey.
I've asked you to sign this this evening so that we can expedite this. This needs to, the consolidation has to be recorded with the county, and, you know, we'd like a receipt indicating that it was recorded before we're going to issue a permit for the paving.
And I believe that was stipulated in the planning report as well.
I'm, I think it was.
Yeah. Pete, any comments or questions?
I have nothing further.
Craig?
Yeah, nothing. They're already discussed.
Nothing for me.
All right. Don't roll away too far, because we'll be back here momentarily in the regular meeting agenda. I know you have the consideration of sustainability goals and objectives next on the worker, on the work session, but can we push that into?
The regular meeting?
The regular meeting.
Absolutely.
And we'll just do that so that we can take care of the applicant, and you don't have to sit through that part of it. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, if you'd like to have it, but not necessary, so.
I appreciate the option.
All right. So 7:09, we'll roll into the regular meeting agenda. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August 16th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments or corrections on the agenda, on the minutes?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, seeing none, then we will accept the minutes as submitted. Public participation opportunity for the members of the public to speak. There's another one signed up, so we'll move on to the next item, which is a lot split and consolidation. Again, I think it's pretty straightforward. Or does that go with Pete or Craig? Any other things on that?
No, I have no other comments.
Anything else you'd like to share on that, Mr. Black?
No.
Are we gonna prove a contingent on the approval of the lighting and the?
Um, that, those will be probably the conditions of the actual site plan approval. The consolidation plan is just as is. I'd like to make the following motion, apply upon, reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted lots consolidation plan for Premier Dutton LLC, permanent parcel numbers 64-02874 and 64-08817, date stamped received September 9th, 2021. I move for final approval of the lot consolidation.
I'll say.
Second by Pete. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes?
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Approval 3-0. The next item is the site plan parking expansion for 9155 Dutton Drive for Premier Dutton LLC. Anything else you'd like to share on this?
Nope.
Or Craig, anything?
I have nothing further.
Yeah, this will have the contingency of the landscape plan, the stormwater management, and the site lighting. Good evening.
Sorry.
All right. Any comments or questions regarding the parking lot expansion?
No, I was good.
All right. I'd like to make the following motion, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted site plans for the parking lot expansion for Premier Dutton LLC, 9155 Dutton Drive, permanent parcel numbers 64-02874 and 64-08817, dated 9/13/2021. I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions: Approval of the landscape plan by the city planner, approval of the stormwater management plan by the city engineer, and approval of the site lighting plan by the city engineer. Have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Craig. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Approved 4-0. Once the Mylar gets all the required signatures, then we'll contact you to come pick it up so that you can file it and keep moving forward.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time and your expediency.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So the mayor is out this week. Try for next Monday.
Okay. No.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration of sustainability goals and objectives. Lynn, that's you, so pick it away.
Okay. So what, you should have, in your packet, at least Mark said that I put the goals and objectives, a hard copy in your packet. Does everybody get that?
Yes, I did.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So then I put in your, in your, in front of your seats, a diagram that reflects sort of an illustration, an illustration of the definition of sustainability, and then the second handout is a couple of simple examples, and the third handout is a list of the topic areas that were presented in the framework that we used to get to the goals and objectives. So I just would like to briefly go through these three items, just to give you an understanding of how we arrived at the goals and objectives, or the process that the group used. So this Venn diagram shows sustainability at the intersection of society, economics, and environment. So this diagram is essentially the ideal of a decision that would be sustainable. This ideal isn't necessarily always met, obviously, but this would be the ideal, and this reflects the three pillars that would be part of that decision-making process. So then the second handout has three simple examples, and so the first one is some examples of native plantings in Twinsburg. The meadow habitat on Liberty Road, there's like a linear native planting along the roadway there, and I have the daylighting of Laurel Creek. Laurel Creek is by, sort of near Idlewood. I think it's on the Jehovah's Witness property. So grant money was used to daylight the Laurel Creek at that location and to plant native plantings. It looks pretty wild there because stuff has grown up quite successfully. We get complaints every fall. People don't like how it looks because a lot of that vegetation dies back. It's brown, doesn't look real attractive. I can definitely agree with them on that, but that's just the way nature works. I think there's a vision maybe on the part of some residents that it's, some pine trees or something evergreen would look nicer, but the native plants provide habitat. There's some video online I saw on YouTube of minks in there. It's really come along nicely, but in terms of this sustainability diagram, yeah, we didn't make everybody happy. Some residents do not agree with that societal choice, and probably some people don't feel like the money spent on it was worth it either. But because it was grant money and not local money, that really wasn't an issue in this project. The second example is the trail plan and the 2020 community engagement survey that identified trails as a, very much a community priority. But as we all know, trails are a lot more expensive than folks realize, and so we get into this cost-benefit, and that becomes somewhat of a matter of opinion, I guess. Is it worth the money to, to create the trails? So then the second, or the third item I have is the example of the gas-powered golf carts that we had versus the electric golf carts that we've integrated into the, to the new clubhouse. The gas power require oil changes and create carbon monoxide emissions. The electric golf carts produce no emissions, but at some point, there's gonna be battery replacements, and then what happens to those batteries? So these are just some simple examples of, of how this sustainability, these pillars come into play. So then the third handout that I have for you shows the 10 sustainability categories that the planning group used to get to the list of goals and objectives that we have. Mike, did you want to copy these?
Could I, please?
Absolutely.
I don't know, I'm pretty good at this.
I could use this, I could use that. You're welcome. Yep. So we, we followed these categories pretty closely, other than when we got to the water and wastewater category, the examples in the framework were less in keeping with life here in Twinsburg, and we altered that. I'm thinking, on the, on the 1, 2, 3, on the fourth page of the goals and objectives, we, we went with habitat preservation as the name of our category, and with the subheading, protect the overall health of the city's habitats, waterways, soils, and other natural resources. So that's where we, we sort of went, went our own way off of this framework. Other than that, our goals and objectives that we've developed follow the framework. So you have, in that email that I sent you, the full framework. I don't know how many pages that was, but it had all, it had lists and lists of examples.
Yeah.
So what we did was went through, talked about the categories, and then we asked the group, we gave each, like, we paired up in the, in the working group, and said, "Okay, this is gonna be your category. You're, you're getting climate-friendly purchasing. We want you to go through this framework and pick a couple items that you think are important, and then in particular, pick one that you feel like is aspirational more than just doable." And so that's how we arrived at this list. And then we went, we spent another week going through it, making sure that we really liked how it was worded and what choices we made. So the group realizes that not everything that could be in here is in here, but it just seemed overwhelming to make this too big, that then that, in and of itself, becomes just unmanageable. We've done a lot in terms of our, you know, just capital improvements and renovations to the city facilities in terms of being more sustainable, but we haven't been consistent. We, we do great at it, and then it falls by the wayside, and then we maybe do great with purchasing, and then we forget about it. So the hope is, by, by having these goals and objectives, it'll keep us on track. Realizing, of course, that we, this isn't all-inclusive at this point. This is really more of a policy guideline and less of an action plan where we're just gonna check items off. We think it's enough of an action plan that these objectives are specific enough that we can take action based on what's in here, but, you know, there's no, by, in the first three years, we're gonna accomplish this, or within five years, we're gonna accomplish that. It's sort of, we've gotta walk a little bit better before we run, kind of mentality. So then after we got through that, Larry and I added the resident actions.
And that's interesting, because I thought that was the interesting part. I didn't realize that that wasn't the group that was.
That was Larry and I. So we said, okay, because what happened was, and Scott can attest to this, we got, in the spring, we got letters from, maybe got two dozen letters from residents saying, you know, "What are we doing about greenhouse gas emissions? How can we get to net zero? I'm raising concerns that we're not doing anything." I don't know how, what force was the catalyst for that? So we, after that happened, we said, okay, we, even though this is a municipal plan for sustainability, it would be good if we could integrate at some level resident actions. And so that's what we did. The, the planning group has seen this, but they also really haven't had much of a chance to comment on it. I think, I think they looked at it, and I don't think anybody had an issue with it. There were a few laughs over, integrate some meatless meal options into your weekly meal plan. But nobody said, "Take it out," so we laughed at it. I know, right?
Yes, sir.
But these, those, the heading on all of those resident actions say, "How might residents contribute?" We felt, well, that was a soft approach to it. It's merely a suggestion or an encouragement. It's not anything more forceful than that. And so I think there are, so this went to Environmental Commission at their last meeting. I haven't listened to the minutes of that yet, but this, I got some comments initially when it was emailed out. I think some of them would like to see this be more forceful, but I don't know. Our, the group's sense is we've, we have some, again, some doable items that seem more doable, and some more aspirational items, and they felt like we hit the right note with the resident actions. And we have a fairly sophisticated group of residents. A lot of people are trying to do, live a lifestyle that's sustainable. We, you know, we chip branches, we collect leaves, we compost that, we send people letters when they blow their grass clippings in the road and ask them to stop doing that. We, we are doing what we can throughout the week to, to integrate residents and to educate them. Like, when I get complaints about the Laurel Creek location, I'll send information. This is, this is why, this is where we got the money.
Well, so yeah, obviously, some things are easier to do than others, and some things just get handled on a daily basis because it's become a good and easy practice to do.
Exactly.
On the other hand, some of this, as you're just saying, is really an educational thing.
Exactly.
For people to understand. I, I thought, like you said, some of those degree points that we're kind of chucked at, but they're thinkers. They, some of them make you think about things that maybe you can't do that aren't that hard to do.
Right.
And implement, you just, well, for whatever reason, haven't, haven't done.
So that became a challenge to not be so specific, like wash your clothes in cold water. I, you know, because where do you draw the line here? That's just an absurdity. And so, for example, on the energy efficiency, we just said, "Be more aware of home energy use, and consider adopting practices that would contribute to lower energy consumption." So there's a link. If you don't know what those things are, you can educate yourself. But putting a whole list of items, not necessary in this community. People get those messages elsewhere, but this seemed, it seemed important to give residents some way of participating. So.
We're just gonna reside, like, I mean, so you're reviewing it here?
We're reviewing it here. This will be part of the larger plan document. So right now, we're trying to hone in on sort of a baseline greenhouse gas emission number. We thought we could do the whole city. We can't. We, we, we just can't dissect the data from industrial and commercial users, from the information we can get from the utility companies. So we can't do that at a Twinsburg level. So, but we do have all the utility bills for all the city facilities, sewer lift stations, anything that uses electricity. We have all the numbers for all the city vehicles in terms of gas usage and mileage and that kind of thing. So we will come up with a baseline number for municipal functions, and we're gonna have to leave it at that. That's what we can, we feel like we can accurately depict. It's just gonna get so questionable if we try to calculate that number for residential, commercial, industrial users. We can't, we can't do it. We, we started off thinking we could, but we can't, we can't do it with any accuracy. So we've let that go. So part of the plan document, Craig, will be goals and objectives. It'll be the, how we calculated the greenhouse gas emissions and what our, what our baseline is, and what our high-energy users are, and that kind of thing. And then there's more standard-type chapters in it about demographics, housing, transportation, and how those sort of topic areas relate to sustainability. So when we, maybe when we get the greenhouse gas numbers, we'll come back and share those with you, and then we'll share the whole draft document with you. So I think for now, if you didn't print off a copy of this, or I didn't send it to you, you know, maybe just look through it and, like Mr. Charles, just, just laugh, cross it off, put a question mark by it, whatever your sense of the item is. Because if you feel like we've missed the mark, or it's not strong enough, or we need to go further, then maybe others will feel that way, too. Yeah, these, these goals and objectives are from the group, working through that framework, and trying to apply it to our local situation. And then, again, the resident actions were, that, those were staff ideas. It's because we've looked at so much of this now in doing, we've been working on this since January. So now Larry and I have looked at so much of the material that's out there. We felt like we had a good sense of what would be practical to put in the document for resident actions.
Pete, I know you, you're sitting on this committee, can you say? Anything you'd like to share from?
Well, there's a few things. I'm not gonna talk many. We've already addressed, as a planning mission, like, putting sidewalks in industrial work, people using. That's what we've done. I also think that, well, one of the things that came up was, well, what people put in, oh, man, like, what you put on a building, that's cool. He says, what if they have to go to ancillary structure to put it out? And what if they have to put towels? And I don't think there's anything yet, or COVID doesn't. I think one of the things we've done that's good is the city's trying to lead by example. You know, we don't wanna tell other people what to do if you're gonna do it yourself. So we're gonna have to address that. One thing that does kind of concern me, and if you look at this first sheet, you see those overlap areas? I've heard this expression before, the law of unintended consequences. And one of the things we have to state in here is, we have to address the law. These might very well have. Remember the commercial on TV about all these corn fields, and alcohol additives to your gas, save natural gas? I'm looking at this thing, and I'm saying, wait a minute, the price of corn's gonna go up. Wait a minute, the price of meat's gonna go up, because we have livestock fed by meat. So what sounded like a real good idea at the beginning had a negative on the environment side, had a negative on the economic side. So one of the things we have to do, when we go through this, and we address this stuff, is we have to be aware of the unintended consequences that come down the line. And I would like that statement added, to be aware of the unintended consequences, and address it. You know, don't get, don't get to the point where, I don't know, what do you call it? People respond to their perception of reality and not reality, all right? Or sometimes a misperception of reality. And I can remember now, this is really well outdated. But Theo Jennings used to do BBC Evening News, and he had some guy on doing test boards in landfills. This guy found was, everybody thinks it's plastic. He does his test boards, and most of the stuff in that landfill was paper. So if we go off and we say, "Let's ban plastic straw, and people use plastic bags," you know, we're really going off in, in the wrong direction. And when you clean up a beach in California, I couldn't believe this, 26 tons of garbage flew off this beach, four pounds of plastic straw. So we have to drill down and address not only the law of unintended consequences, but our own misperceptions of reality. That's what I'm saying.
Interesting. Thank you, Pete. Questions at the moment on this? I know we have, we get some time to digest it, but.
I mean, I guess, what are we as a group supposed to do with this? Like, are we supposed to encourage permeable concrete, like I saw on one of these, for, you know, for?
No, I think this is more just, the intent of this is to serve as a policy document or as a basis for city decision-making. So let's just say the fitness center needs a new roof.
A guiding document.
So, okay, we're gonna buy a new roof. Well, can we buy a white roof that's more energy efficient? Well, what's that gonna cost? Is it gonna cost 10% more? Is it gonna cost 20% more? What energy savings might there be? It's just sort of saying, we're gonna prioritize that type of decision-making, where we're not necessarily doing that now. Say, oh, this is the best value, and we're not really thinking about necessarily that energy conservation.
Is it our role or goal to challenge a city on putting a white roof on that? Like, I'm wondering how I'm gonna answer these.
I think right now, what, what we, what we need to do is, is review the goals and objectives. I think right now, what we need to do is review the goals and objectives as they're put together, and see if there anything that we don't understand and want more information on, or we don't think is the right thing for the city.
Appropriate for the city to be doing.
We have ideas that may plug in that aren't even on here, that may have been considered and they didn't think was worthy, but.
Right, because someone on Environmental Commission said, well, why aren't we prioritizing, you know, composting on here? Because it's not really mentioned in these goals and objectives, not specifically. But we are composting those leaves, the leaves collected at curbside and the branches chipped are being composted. The city's not doing it. We're taking the material to a landscaper, and they're doing it. At Earth Day every year, we've had various composting displays, how-tos, vermiculture, and we've encouraged people to do a backyard composting type activity, but we're not, we haven't incorporated that officially into one of the specific objectives in this document. I think it was talked about before, decades ago, maybe having a composting facility on the community garden spot, but we, I think the city ran into EPA regulations about runoff, and so that was sort of abandoned. So if there was something, like an idea like that, well, why aren't we emphasizing composting? Well, that's why, because we feel like we are composting by virtue of taking, collecting those materials, taking them to a facility to compost them. But yeah, it may be that we haven't thought of everything in here.
So really, now it's just helping formulate what will become the final document, and then I guess it could be discussion on how we as planning commission members utilize it going forward.
Yeah.
Well, I like your ideas, and, okay, but it's not suitable everywhere.
Right.
You know, because.
We allow it, but we don't require it.
Yeah, and it's costly.
And it's costly.
Yep.
And you have to maintain it.
Just because, what works for the EPA is.
Yeah, I know.
But she's showing you this map of a well, you know, community water system, and there's this parking lot, they're trying to drain the parking lot across the, how do you call it? So the influence for the well, and told her, as this, well, why don't you just use semi-uprime and we drain it the other way? She goes, sometimes, just because it goes this way on the surface, because it may go the other way underneath.
Right.
So, you shouldn't get kind of, you jump when you pick that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
But you go, what do you call it, biochavers underneath. So you have to, you know, like I say, drill down and find out what you're really dealing with, just don't think that you can gloss over something on the surface and that's it, and probably get a problem that you never expect.
Right.
You be honest?
No.
Steve?
I think the concept is great, and I think we should have something like this as a guiding document. And I think, so realistically, you've got three components here. You've got the city, you've got the residents, and then you've got industrial, commercial.
Business community, yeah.
Yeah. You have, the other, two of them, you don't have no control over. So all you can do is kind of set the example, but, you know, I mean, some of the things the city can do is like, no idle policy. You know, don't idle your vehicles.
Right. We have that. We have a no idle policy.
And I harped on it the whole time I was on the school board. I said, we spend all this thousands of dollars for security systems, why are we leaving lights on at night?
Yeah.
There's nobody in the building. So like, you've got bollards out here right now. I mean, theoretically, when we all walk out of here, this building should go dark.
Yeah.
You know, there's energy, energy consumption right there, so it's just being more smart about what you do. And, you know, Pete brought it up, but I read the one thing, you know, the architectural reviewer was talking about trying to regulate solar panels. Why would you do that? I mean, yes, I agree, there should be some framework for that, but if I want to put solar panels on my house, I'll put them on my house. Can't hit them right now, but anyhow, that's the problem. But I think, you know, as the city in a sustainability initiative should be the leader in doing those things. And like I said, you know, there's just a couple things off the top of my head that we can do, and stop dumping piles of salt on the road in the wintertime. As I'm driving over them. But, you know, that's, that's the biggest thing that frustrates me, is we talk about sustainability and protecting the environment, everything, but yeah, we dump tons of salt on the road in the wintertime so people don't have salt, and there's snow on the road so they can drive. It's like, I digress. But I think if, you know, we've done a lot in city buildings to upgrade energy systems and LED things, and just, I think just improving upon building management is probably the biggest thing the city can do to set that example. But you're never going to change residents' habits. It's not going to happen. You know, some people will change, but I dare to say it, because my mother is a senior, she isn't going to change her ways. She's going to keep doing what she does, so.
Exactly, and that's, that's sort of how we arrived at this approach in terms of resident actions. Just making this a question.
Well, I think making them aware of what the options are, some people will latch on to it, some people will be interested, some will not.
I mean, over time, it'll change.
With anything.
Yeah.
With anything.
But, I mean, I go.
So you at least got to put it out there.
Oh, yeah.
The opportunity.
Well, I go back to Adventures Daycare. They were all upset when I asked them to put sidewalks in. Well, there's no other sidewalks. Yeah, but eventually, maybe there will be. So I think, you know, we talked about it, just, you know, that should be, anybody does a property improvement, I don't care if there's no sidewalks around, you're putting sidewalks in, because eventually, all those pieces will connect, and we'll have some, you know, walkability.
Yeah, it's probably ideal for the capital owners, might start extending sidewalks.
Yeah.
Whether or not, so we can get that, you know, really connect it up.
But you're right, I mean, the trails project's great, but people don't understand that building trails is almost half as much as building roadways, because there's drainage issues, there's runoff, there's base materials and whatnot.
Scott, anything?
No, I mean, nothing that really hasn't been touched on by the members of the commission. I agree with Mr. Schibek. I mean, I think this is a great framework for, for the city and a guiding document for residents. I don't think you're ever going to be able to police or enforce that any meaningful way other than to lead by example, whether it's, you know, the electric vehicle charging stations throughout the city, you know, a lot of the grants that we've gotten for LED lighting upgrades, and, you know, energy-efficient HVAC systems and that kind of stuff. I, I think it's a great jumping off point, and I mean, I liked that it was, vague isn't the right word, but not, we weren't focusing on a specific, like, yeah. Only red meat twice a week.
Right, right.
Broad scope.
Or only wash your clothes in cold water. So I mean, I think that.
Take a shower once a week.
Whoa, wait a minute. Taking a step back.
I think it's going to be one of those things that, as the younger folks that are certainly more attuned to this, and, you know, are raised with green energy and energy conservation and stuff like that, as part of even their educational backgrounds, I think you'll start to see that paradigm shift, you know, hopefully more toward that sustainability circle in the middle. Because certainly, like you pointed out, I mean, your parents and mine, they're probably not changing a whole lot at this point in time, so.
Well, I think, I think everyone kind of touched on it, it's lead by example, inform and educate.
Yep.
That's really.
Hybrid vehicles for the police department and stuff like we're doing now, the Flexfield stuff, I mean, that's.
So, anything on closing comments on this for now?
No, I think, other than one, one very important part of this is to create a sustainability working group representing each city department, and so that sort of formalizes this, that even if that working group met annually, even if somebody from each department met annually to go over these goals and objectives and said, how did we do? How are we doing this year? It would keep us on track, and it will keep it in the forefront. So, one of the recommendations is to form that group within the, between the city departments. We're not doing that now. Each department acts independently. They may be making good purchasing choices from an environmental perspective, but they may not. I think everybody's probably buying recycled content paper.
Though some things are easy and.
Right.
Would just happen.
So, like Scott characterized this, this is a good jumping off place, it's a good support document, and hopefully, it'll keep us consistent with what we're trying to achieve.
So, was I correct that we'd like to see planning commission come back in our next meeting if they have any comments?
If you have any comments, yeah.
Or send comments to you, however.
Yeah. That would be fine, either way. Send me an email if you have a thought about any of these items, or, yeah, come back the next meeting. But either way, we'll revisit this in the larger document.
Right. Thank you. Communications and miscellaneous, Steve?
I have nothing.
Greg?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Nothing for me, sir.
Lynn, what do we see on the horizon for upcoming meetings?
I think we may have a conditional use permit request for a fitness facility in an industrial district. The Deer Run Apartments have been working on sort of a clubhouse swimming pool project for quite some time. They finally got an approval from the Army Corps of Engineers to fill a little bit of wetland on that site. If you recall, we had that lot split.
Yep.
From the house there, and so I think they're ready to move forward with the project. So we may have that at our next meeting. Other than that, not anything on my radar right now.
Next meeting is on the 18th of October, so still a little time for stuff to roll in. All right, thank you for that. Need a motion to excuse our absent member this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Steve, second.
Second.
Looking at Craig, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Schibek?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, Steve's excused, how about that? It is 7:46 adjourned.